Good evening. I'm calling this Tacoma School Board meeting of February 24th, 2022 to order. And shall we all stand and do the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Start with the land acknowledgement. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as the first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage on their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. General Counsel True Blood, could you call the roll?
Yes, good evening. President Bonbright.
Here.
Vice President Keating.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Stroeschel.
Here.
Director McCallroy.
Here.
I'd also like to acknowledge our student board representatives. I know that two of them are on the way, Caitlin Yee and Tasha Watson. And then also we have Sheedra Veronica and Paris Quinn. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin our board meeting tonight, in light of the tragic news coming out of Ukraine, I want to recognize the added stress and pain being felt by many of our students and their families and our staff with loved ones in Ukraine and in all the other countries around the world struggling under violence and upheaval. And may the path to peace be found quickly. All right. The first item, which is to vote on, is item number six, adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes 5-0. Next item is item number seven, recognition of staff, students, and community. 7.1, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Charlotte Bash and Amber Hayward.
Thank you, directors. Good evening, directors and our beloved community. My name is Amanda Scott Thomas. I'm the director of the Community Partnership Office for Tacoma Public Schools. And it's with pleasure tonight that we talk and acknowledge our Gold Star Community Partner Award for the month of January. Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, and schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are supporting students, academic success, and the success of the whole child. We know that our partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for Tacoma Public Schools students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to community partners who made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Tonight, we recognize our closest tribal neighbor, the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. The work of the Puyallup Tribal members, Charlotte Bash and Amber Hayward, is exemplary in assisting Tacoma Public Schools in an array of initiatives supporting our partnership with the Puyallup Tribe. Charlotte Bash is the Historic Preservation Coordinator for the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. The work the Puyallup Tribal member Charlotte has done within the tribal Historic Preservation Department, she has been vital in the implementation of the Since Time Immemorial Tribal Sovereignty Curriculum by sharing tribal history, resources, and expertise. Staff says that Charlotte has been an absolute pleasure and honor to work with. She's attentive to our organization, but especially when it comes to a focus on student learning. Her focus is not only Native American students, but all students and staff within Tacoma Public Schools. Amber Hayward is the director of the Puyallup Tribal Language Program. Amber is a vital component of the Land Acknowledgement Plaque Statement Project, supporting Tacoma Public Schools with the La Chute See translation. She participated in the renaming committee and process for Hilltop Heritage. Amber also works closely with our Title VI Indian Education Program on various aspects of culture and language. Amber provided the Puyallup Artist Poster Series to the Title VI Indian Education Program for sharing throughout the district. Staff also expressed that Amber was a complete pleasure and honor to work with as well. She is valued and a contributor to our greater vision. Charlotte and Amber share and support Tacoma Public Schools' vision of providing the most authentic and accurate version of tribal history possible. And tonight, the Community Partnership recommends that Charlotte Bash and Amber Hayward to be awarded the Gold Star Community Partner Award for the month of January. Can we give them a hand? And I'm going to ask to come up just to say a few words. Amber Hayward, is Charlotte here yet? Oh, ladies, come on up to the front. Here are your awards. Charlotte. You're welcome to say a few words to the board.
Good day, everyone. My name is Charlotte Bash. I work for the Puyallup Tribe's Historic Preservation Department. I'm a Puyallup Tribal member with family also on the Oregon coast at Clasit Nahalem. It's been a lot of fun working with all of you, and I see a lot of familiar faces. So I just want to thank you all for welcoming us into the district. I know that there's been a lot of work going in. And you know, every time I said this, I think when I spoke to the board last, when we were working on the renaming of Hilltop Heritage, that every partnership, every project that we engage with, it shows how much work there is still to be done. But it's really nice to take a moment and see how far we've come in all of the work that we've put in and how much of a difference that's making for not just the students and families here, but the greater community in the Tacoma area. So I really appreciate this. It's really nice, you know, Amber and I are helping on a teacher training on Saturday in two days. So we've been working really hard with your team here. And it's just nice to take a minute and look back at all the accomplishments. So thank you very much for this. Good day to each and every one of you. My name is Amber Sterud Hayward. I'm a Puyallup Tribal member. I've worked for the Puyallup Tribe for 20 years, presently in the Language Department, formerly in the Historic Preservation Department. So I was able to visit lots of Tacoma schools, you know, about 20 some years ago. Not trying to tell all my age, but it's just really awesome to see you folks taking the lead, you know, with our local schools here and representing all students. I see that every student, every day. And so we just appreciate you folks taking this step to incorporate each and every one of your students and families and making it very visible in your school. And that's what we get to do with our language is you guys purchase posters that represent the Puyallup Tribe and the Puyallup Tribal language, and you purchase them for each and every classroom in your school district. So that's just creating a healthy space and an environment for our students and our people to feel accepted in this community. And so again, we just thank you very much for all the good work that everybody is doing. Thank you.
Charlotte and Amber, thank you so much for coming this evening and for all the hard work you've been doing in the community with us to help us be a vessel for the education. And we appreciate it.
Director, we have one more. So we have February's recognition. And so the February recipient is the Tacoma Black Parents Association. The Black Parent Alliance works with the Tacoma community to discuss relevant topics, gain information, and make decisions to improve the education of children. The Black Parent Alliance advocates for policies that improve the intellectual, social, and emotional success of black scholars and families. The Black Parent Alliance also empowers and gives voice to the concerns and successes of black scholars and families. The Black Parent Alliance also mobilizes allies within our community to highlight the need for more robust systems for black scholars. Consistent with the belief that black parents are the children's most important and first teachers, the BPA relies on a definition of family engagement that views it as a systemic, sustained commitment that occurs across time, spans many settings, and requires a shared responsibility from all parties. Despite the family's critical role, schools and early childhood programs oftentimes struggle successfully engaging and empowering parents and the broader community. The Black Parent Alliance's goals are to engage parents of black youth, build the capacity of parents and service providers for partnership, and improve life outcomes for black students. And so we have another one for the month of February. We want to acknowledge the Black Parent Alliance and award them with the February Gold Star Community Partner Award. To have that, to receive that award, we have one of its members, Corbett Moses Elite, accept. Can we give him a hand?
Thank you. Just want to say thank you, especially to Amanda Scott Thomas for the partnership that has sustained over the last couple of years through COVID and the partnership with Tacoma Public Schools. Just want to acknowledge, you know, black parents, like all parents, want to be engaged and be partners in their children's success. And that means, you know, working through systems, you know, advocating in different ways and coming together to share resources. And I think that we're finding our place in how we do that well. And I just want to make sure that I acknowledge some of the founding members, including Jamad Canley, Senator Twana Nobles, and Cherie Cooks, and many parents who attend and give their time to support us coming together and working together. And we're getting reestablished now and looking forward to our event this Sunday, the Black Families Conference, from 2:00 to 3:30, to bring together some community experts and talk about new data strategies to kind of approach certain issues. It's not just about our school systems, but also our community supports, other systems of supports, and how we think about that work. So I appreciate the acknowledgement and thank you for the support.
Thank you very much. And please pass on our congratulations and thanks to all the members of the group. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 7.3, recognition of the district's financial department for earning two certificates of excellence in financial reporting.
Good evening, President Bonbright and members of the board. My name is Kathryn McCarthy, and I work in the Public Information Office. Tonight, I would like to share a recognition of the district's finance department for earning two certificates of excellence in financial reporting. The Association of School Business Officials International presented Tacoma Public Schools with its 30th consecutive Certificate of Excellence Award for its annual comprehensive financial report. And the Government Finance Officers Association also awarded Tacoma Public Schools its 30th consecutive Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending August 31st, 2020. To receive the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence, school districts must meet or exceed the program's high standards for financial reporting and accountability. The Government Finance Officers Association also sets high standards. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. These awards represent a significant achievement and reflect the district's longstanding commitment to transparency, fiscal integrity, and high-quality financial reporting. I'd like to introduce Carlin Shannon from our finance team.
First of all, I want to be clear. I did not prepare 30 years' worth of financial report for the district. But it's been an honor to work with Roslyn and do that hard work. I just want to make sure that I am up here, but also I'm representing my staff in accounting services. I have Alice and Mimi and Elizabeth, who's here, and Ginny and Sonia and Salia and Cherie, who all work very hard behind the scenes to prepare the financial statements for the district. And that's in cooperation with all of the behind-the-scenes work that we do with budget department, purchasing, payroll, and the finance director. So, thank you.
Thank you so much and for being the unsung heroes that are behind all of the hard work that goes into it. I know I'm very proud of the work that you all do and very grateful. So thank you very much. Item eight, the superintendent's report, 8.1.
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to start off with one of our new traditions. Dr. Forrest Greek is going to take us through our whole educator recognition. And tonight, we're recognizing our maintenance workers.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Garcia, members of the board. So I get the lovely pleasure again and once again, and for this month, we're honoring our maintenance and operations folks. So just for your awareness, so the Facilities Department that makes up these great people supports and maintains 70 district facilities in over 150 buildings all over our school district. The primary function of the department is to ensure that facilities and sites are safe, secure, clean, healthy, and efficiently operated. Our maintenance operation team has done just that and even more so during COVID time. Our places are simply operational because of the great work from this team. They provide a variety of building trades that include electrical, plumbing, carpentry, painting, and mechanical maintenance, as well as repairing and replacing district facilities and infrastructures and components. They also support daily facility repair, even on emergency databases. These employees simply keep the district running, and we are lucky to have them. On behalf of the district, thank you for your service. And I have two folks that are here with us today, Steve Graves and Ian Achoa. If you could stand up, they are here on behalf of our folks. Thank you again for your service. This is an amazing team.
Thank you. And we're very grateful for the work that you and your colleagues do on our behalf. And the district always looks top-notch when you go to our facilities, and it's because of the work you do. So thank you.
Yeah, just, I think we've heard the importance, the primary objective is health and safety, make sure everybody's safe, and the sites are obviously functional. But so I think that that's really, really important work. So I know you're working really, really, really hard. I've saw your crew at Foss last week, and you're, it wasn't nice weather and working hard. So thank you very much. I know you're at all the schools, though.
Thank you. All right, item number 8.2, COVID-19 updates.
So before I jump into our COVID updates, I also want to just extend my gratitude for the men and women that work in our Maintenance and Facilities Department. It's, we are a large organization with a lot of square footage and a lot of ground. And this is a mighty team that goes above and beyond. And so on-call all the time, 24/7, 365 days a year. And it's so much of an honor to take a moment just to spotlight them tonight. So thank you very much. Tonight, I have just a couple of quick COVID updates. First is that there was an announcement made last week. We talked a little bit about it at our study session. But the governor came out last week, I believe, the date's escaping me, and made an announcement that the statewide mask mandate would be removed on March 21st. There were some more details to that, but I want to remind everyone right now, currently, as you can see, we're all still required to wear masks indoors on TPS grounds. The state has indicated that they will provide some further guidance as early as March 7th. So we don't have a lot of details of what that further guidance looks like. The second piece that I would just like to articulate is that, starting on Monday, in outdoor spaces, in which we have, by not only the governor, but by the county, are able to do, students are able to wear masks outside on, excuse me, students are permitted to not wear masks outside, they are welcome to wear masks if they would like to, on TPS grounds. And so that's a little subtle shift, starting Monday, the 28th. That's once again, outside only, on TPS grounds. Students and staff, as well as visitors, have the choice to wear masks and will be supported if they choose to or if they choose not to. Indoors, until further notice, March 21st, all staff, students, and visitors are required to wear masks indoors. I'll pause there for any questions. I know that I kind of...
I was just wondering if you, I know that there is some distinction between transportation and where the federal requirements versus state, and wondering if you could just speak and explain a little bit more about that, please.
So thank you for that clarification. It's our understanding that there is still a discussion at the state and federal level of whether there would be a federal requirement for transportation, meaning students would have to wear buses or masks on buses. And I would like to articulate again, it's we do not know if that's the only place, because we have not gotten the guidance in writing from the Department of Health, OSPI, and Labor and Industries. And so more information is really going to come, not only on buses potentially, or other indoor spaces at the earliest March 7th. And so we are in still a kind of a waiting period for what does it mean to lift that mask mandate.
I'm going to ask if any of our student reps have any thoughts or questions about this. Sorry, didn't see you. Oh, Chelsea.
Okay. So just reiterating, and I think you should say it, there were some talks about support for students and staff who choose to continue wearing masks after the mandate is lifted. I think maybe you should say that for this.
Absolutely. And so I think what's really important is that what we can understand right now and what we've seen from our local health department on their intent, as well as alignment in the state, is individuals will have the choice to wear masks indoors, just like they currently have the choice right now to wear them outdoors when we walk in. It's important to know that we, as an organization, will, we will support students and staff, and we continue to offer, will offer PPEs, masks available on our sites. So if they choose to wear them, they'll have support. And if they choose not to wear them, based on the guidance, we will support that as well.
Any other members have come in? Any of the student reps have questions or comments about the guidance or?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I just want to confirm what I was hearing, is it that until further notice, masks will, the mandate will, on the 28th, it's optional to wear masks outside, but not inside until further notice? Is that what you said?
I believe that, I'm going to repeat it again, I believe you are correct. Starting February 28th, on TPS grounds, staff, students, and visitors have the ability to wear a mask or not wear a mask outside on TPS grounds. All staff, students, and visitors, until at least March 21st, that is when the governor is proposing to remove his mask mandate, are still required to wear masks indoors and on buses.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Director Leon.
Thanks. I think it's also probably important to recognize that this is a plan, a proposal from the governor because of the modeling that's been going on regarding the infection rate, the hospital beds that are available. And just like throughout the pandemic, sometimes modeling changes, the forecasts change, and the recommendations have changed. So we hope that this stays with this date. But the governor and our local health department could change that. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, I want to be very careful with my words. The target dates have been communicated at the governor's level. The governor has the discretion to change at any point and require. That is not a TPS local decision. Pierce County Health Department could add more requirements than the governor has the statutory authority to, it's my understanding at this point. If they choose to, that is not a TPS decision. And so I'm here to share with you, yes, Director Leon, it is based off modeling, that is our understanding. But I want to be very careful about articulating that it's an all or none. We have not seen what the guidance looks like and will not have access to that. We're being communicated it will not come any earlier than March 7th with the idea that it could come later than March 7th.
And just, we've talked about the ability to wear masks. People have the choice and want to do that, to make sure that people know they're empowered to do that even after this mask mandate is lifted, because there's still folks and their families that may not have been able to get vaccinated. So they may want to choose to wear masks. So we'll want to make sure we have a safe environment for people to wear those if they choose to. So just like any article, I think you've probably heard this from public health officials. So if the weather forecast change, you put a raincoat on, right? If the pandemic, the numbers rise, or something happens in your family, you feel like you need to wear a mask, then you wear a mask.
Okay, thank you. Anything more?
Couple of quick other announcements, some celebrations. We had crowned a number of state champions. We'll be bringing those state champions hopefully here to the spring to recognize. We have a young lady wrestler from Mount T that is the new TNT Athlete of the Week. We had a wonderful celebration with the Willie Stewart Academy last night and graduates, so very much thankful to that staff. And tomorrow is another one of our Friday Spirit Days. It's Give Back. And in the spirit of Give Back, sometimes Give Back just means a thank you. And we encourage everyone in our community to join that. And I would just encourage folks to say, tell an educator how much you appreciate them, because they are doing amazing work out there every day. And tell a child, one of our students, what amazing work they are doing, because it's true. And so Give Back doesn't necessarily mean time or money. It also just means gratitude. And so in the spirit of kicking that off, I'd like to say thank you to all of our staff and students for giving back, not only to me personally and my life, but to our community. It's very important. So thank you for your time tonight.
All right, moving on to item nine, staff report to the board, 9.1, planning and construction capital projects update.
Mr. Williams is going to be joining us, and Mr. Aldridge. Tonight, we're giving you an update of information of where are we at with our capital project journey. I can probably say that more articulately and not trip over it. So I'm going to stop talking and turn it over to Morris, and he will take us through a presentation of our update.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Members of the board, what we wanted to try to do tonight was give you just a brief update of where we're at on our major capital projects. So as we go through and look on our first slide, we're talking about Downing and Skyline Elementary. You can see there where, percentage-wise, where our completion is. And both these buildings, of course, are scheduled open this fall of 2022. Skyline, of course, will become a swing site, and Bryant will actually be moving into that location this fall as well. But you can see where occupancy, both buildings are moving along really well. It's really nice, though, to be able to see the Downing Building, because that is the building, again, that we purchased from the Boys and Girls Club, where we now will have a combination of both TPS and the Boys and Girls Club in the same building in that space, which really shows, I think, some of the partnerships that our board and our district really has embraced over the years. Fossid Elementary, we're actually getting ready now to start demolition of that building within the next couple of weeks. We've been fortunate enough, I want to say about this building, we've actually been able to share this building and that resource with other state organizations from Rescue Dogs, the Fire Department, and some other agencies have used our building for trainings, and it's really been very successful. And I think we've been in there at least 10 to 15 times since that building was unoccupied. But we will actually start the demo of that building officially. I think Hensel Phelps will take over that building tomorrow, and then next week, they can go in and start doing some demo. On Bryant Montessori, we're in the process right now of selecting the design builder for that project. We hope to bring that to the board. for that project. We hope to bring that to the board within the next month and a half. We've got, fortunately, we had eight candidates that actually came up, eight groups, more than we've ever had for any of our major capital projects. One thing we're doing a little bit differently, also under the progressive design build, and with progressive design build in the state of Washington, is that when we bundle things together, if we've got more than a $2 million price tag, we can do progressive design build, because that then allows us to hire our contractor and architect on qualification. It also allows us then to get more greater flexibility in selecting subs, so that when we're looking at women and minority and inclusion, we're able to increase those numbers by doing so. So with the projects that we have out there right now, we've got pools that we're, we should be bringing a GMP to the board within the next month on that. Our safety and security, you've seen the results there. We've got some of the camera installations that I've already done. We'll start on the vestibules this summer, once, once we've got some opening spaces there. And then, of course, one of the most visible projects that we'll have as we start going through is our district-wide athletic courts and fields over at Lincoln High School and for Stadium High School, which is at Stanley. Right now, we're slated for the summer of '23 to begin work on that, on those two projects. Both of those are a little more complex, because they've both got some interesting issues. There's a major water main that serves downtown, that actually goes across the Lincoln property. So that's one, where we have to really coordinate well with the city and make sure we don't have certain things over that main. So we're doing that. We, we do have our permit sets for Geodrome and Mason are with the city right now. And we anticipate doing work there this summer, along with the tennis courts at Brown's Point. We are delaying our indoor air quality GMP until our next meeting. We actually had, had some of that on the agenda for tonight, but we've got some issues within the documentation, and we need to make sure it's clear. So we're not bringing that for tonight, but we'll, we'll bring that at our next meeting. But our teams have gone out to all of our sites, available sites, going through, making their recommendations, and putting together a needs, so that we can come up with a GMP to move forward with that project as well. And with that, some of the things that, just be aware of, especially right now in the Puget Sound region, we're currently at about 10.09% of escalation for construction in this region right now. This is what was reported by the Daily Journal within the last month. Part of what we did as we were preparing our budgets is that we did include a robust escalation factor. We included eight to nine percent on our project. So right now, we believe that we'll continue to move forward. We're hoping that it doesn't continue to go up, because some of those things, we don't have any control over, but we're hoping that they do not. The impact really has, has been a little bit on, on our cost side, but we've had actually greater impacts just on the long lead times for some items, just because it's taking so long, both on, on shipment, and then the fact that difficult to get electronic chips, polymers for plastics and those things. All of those things right now are increasing, but we still, we believe we have a, have a good handle on those items. And then, looking at our investment in the community, again, this, I think we've sent this document to you once before, what we're trying to do again, well, what, to honor what the board, the commitment the board had in 2016, is making sure that when we look at our minority business inclusion, to getting, having at least 10% on our major capital projects. You can see there Downing Elementary School, we're at 18.8, 10.4, we're at Skyline, 15% on the Hunt Middle School Project. All of those numbers will fluctuate until we get, get our finals. The one area that we continue to struggle with, and really, everyone does, is just on the women's side, because there really aren't very many women-owned businesses within our region. The City's disparity study that they came out with two years ago showed that, that within Pierce County, they're just very, we're very limited. But we are trying to work with, with smaller companies, trying to get them certified, so that if they can participate, we definitely, definitely trying to reach out and get them in, along with small businesses. And when we talk small, we're talking to micro businesses that bring in less than a million dollars a year. Well, we can include them in, and especially when we're bundling projects, that allows us then to be able to bring in those smaller projects. So, to give you an example, as we look at the demolition in and around Gault, we're actually breaking that up into four different projects, so that we can get four different small contractors to be able to come in and work on it. That's just one example of some of the things that we're, that we're trying to do, to make sure we're as inclusive as we possibly can in looking at these numbers. Any questions?
Director McMoore?
No, I just wanted to thank you for the work that you're doing, and the way you presented back to us and to community. I think it makes it really clear to the community that we're doing our due diligence, we're trying to find local partners and getting the construction up and going. And I think it's really important that we continue to do so, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do any of the student reps have any questions about the construction projects, or any of that? Okay. Awesome. All right. Thank you so much, Morris and Chris, for your hard work and the team. Item 10, Members of the Public Wishing to Address the Board. We have, we're under alternative protocols that the school board members and current encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting, but the superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at the meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@comma.k12.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability or COVID accommodations. So the first option is an in-person open meeting option, which is here tonight. The general counsel will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. Please speak into the microphone, leave your mask on while speaking. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. The second option is the written comment. So, the first option, general counsel, do we have anyone willing, wanting to speak to the board?
We have no speakers registered tonight.
Okay, thank you. And the second option is the written comment, and we did not receive any this evening either. So, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any, any comments or concerns about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes 5-0. Item number 12 is Policy Matters, and we have none tonight. 13 is the Financial Report, and the district's quarterly financial report is, is done quarterly, and our CFO, Rosalind Medina, is here to make that presentation.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Wanted to provide you with a very brief update on where we're at in financials this time of year. So these projections will be based as of November. I know it is February, nearly the end of February. We always lag a little bit behind, because we don't close our books until the following month. And so, we want to make sure that you have an understanding that, you know, I know it's November, I know it's, I know these are for November, and I know it comes in February. It's just part of the natural process. And I would say we are a tad bit behind due to the implementation of the new financial system. So we're still working on getting reports together and being sure that we have all of our data in line before we get everything presented up. So, one caveat there. What we're seeing in the chart on the right gives us a quick snapshot of how our financials are doing. Our beginning fund balance, which is where we ended last year, was a little bit less than what we had thought it would be. About $4.7 million below what we had planned in the budget. So we actually have a fund balance currently at the start of the school year of $56 million. That 1%, oh, well, the $4.7 million really represents a little less than 1% of our revenues last year. So while it is a big number, it's really not, in the whole of the budget, a significant variance between what we had planned for and what we, what we ended with. The revenues that we planned for, for the '21-'22 school year are $553.9 million. And where we're at right now is $497 million. That's $56 million less than what we would have planned for. I, I do know that that is a significant number, and that does feel kind of jarring to see that number up there. We've never seen a number quite so big before. Some of the factors that play into that are SER claiming. So SER are the federal funds that we've received for rehab, like recovery and stabilization due to the COVID pandemic. That is a reimbursement grant, and so we have to actually expend the resources before we can ask for the state to provide us with the money, and then the money comes to us. So, because we haven't physically spent it, we don't have those resources available, they don't show up in our projection as we're projecting through. As we progress through, and we start to spend some of those resources, you'll start to see that number correct. Additionally, we plan for way more SER resources to be used than what we actually think that we will be using, way more is a technical term, by the way. And I say that because when we build our budget, we're limited at the state level by our total expenditures. And we have to have revenues that balance to our expenditures. So we indicated that we would have a higher revenue coming in, and we, that way we were able to build additional expenditures, in case something new came, in case new funding comes, just to give us that buffer. We call it capacity when we're talking about it from a technical budgeting term. And so we built in excess capacity this year, and you're seeing that represented in these numbers as well. And then the third thing that really has an impact in those revenues is our enrollment is down. We are down 817 students as of November, and that's a significant number. Last year, we had lost 1,100 students, and those students didn't come back. We had budgeted that we would get some of them back. They didn't show up in this year, and so that's putting us a little bit of, putting a little bit of pressure on us as it relates to our revenues. On the expenditure side of things, just one other note, sorry, on the revenues, that revenue number represents 89.7% of our budget. So, from a, how much we're actually spending, we're at 89.7% of what we projected. On the expenditure side, we're at 85% projected. So where we projected a $587 million spend, we're really climbing in closer to $499 million. The good news, which I know $87 million, again, is a very jarring number, the good news, when you look at the $497 million of revenues and the $499 million of expenditures, those numbers are tracking together. We're not over-expending from the revenues that were coming in. And, and so that puts us at a little bit less pause or concern around the fact that those are very significant budget impacts that we're seeing. So based on that, when we look at where we'll end our fund balance, right now, we project our fund balance to end at $53.8 million. Again, I suspect that that will change significantly as SER comes in. That will remain to be seen. And then as we get additional financial information, as we continue to build out reports and get more access to the data that's in the system, we'll have more confidence in that, whether that number is really tracking as it is, or whether we maybe have some discrepancies in the way that we're looking at the data, which could be partial errors on our part as well. Just in looking at new systems, you don't always know that everything that's in the system is exactly how it was when you looked at it in the past system. The other thing I want to share with you is, we did get information this week from both the Senate and the House budgets. Both of those budgets were released, they're working their way through the legislative process. We believe that there's negotiations that are happening behind the scenes already. It appears that K-12 will have some relatively significant increases. There's several different components that are really beneficial for school districts. I think it's a little too early to say whether or not those are going to come to fruition. We're still working on all the calculations for it, as they just were released this week. And then, we'll have to bring back that information probably at the next board meeting or, or study session, depending on what the calendar looks like. So I'll just stop there and ask if you have any questions of me.
I don't have any questions, just to comment about the releasing of the budgets. And as I was listening to the sort of debrief about it on the WASD call today, my brain hurt. And so, just because the differences of the negotiations between both the Senate and the Senate proposal budget, proposed budget and the House, it is so complicated, and there's a lot of moving parts. And so, I just, hats off to, like, it's a lot of information to process, and still, it's just going to be some more time before we really know the full impacts and full, like, what, how this will all settle out. Particularly, I should say, I'm sorry about enrollment stabilization, particularly, that was kind of the key thing that we were hearing about today.
Director King, and to add to that complexity is, so the legislative session will end, and then rules will have to be written. So, in that clarity, there's, you know, our team needs time to see those rules written for a lot of those decisions and the subtleties. And so, I think it's 90 days after the session ends, the rules have to be written. So, we may not be able to bring as much clarity as we'd like to, as soon as we'd like to.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Medina, you have one more slide.
You have another slide.
I didn't know if you wanted. No, I'm good. We don't need to go through it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, moving on to 14, Curriculum and Instruction. 14.1, Approval of the Interlocal Agreement of TSD 22.8083 between Renton School District and Tacoma Public Schools from March 1, 2022 till August 31, 2024.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal agreement, TSD-22-083 between the Renton School District and the Tacoma Public Schools from March 1, 2022 through August 31, 2024. Funding source, Renton School District.
Hey, does anyone have any questions or concerns about this item? We have, actually, do we have a motion to move this item?
I move to adopt 14.1.
Okay, do we?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we ask, do we have any questions or concerns about this item? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we pass 5-0. Item 14.2, Approval to Purchase the NearPod Fluxu, Fluxu, Flakaboo. Anyway, Learning Application for the 2021, 2022, and 22, 2023 school year.
Vocabulary.
Oh, thank you. I was just like stumbling over that one. I love made-up words. Okay.
The Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve the purchase of delivery of NearPod vocabulary learning application for the remainder of the 2021-22 school year, and for the 2022-23 school year in the amount of $220,533.82, with the option to extend for a third year for $180,384.62.
Can you explain a little bit about what this one is?
Absolutely. So we have, we had NearPod last year, kind of during our remote/hybrid. We did a small inventory to see which applications we wanted to continue, as we remain a one-to-one district. And then, we actually had some input from our Gates Grant with NWA. They did an audit of all the different applications we currently have available for kids. That sent us out for another RFP process. What we were missing was another kind of engagement platform. So we have reading and math tools, and assessment tools, and videos, access to literacy tools. And what NearPod brings is that ability for the teacher to kind of do some interactive work live. You could even have kids working on their own pace. So an example, I could put a PowerPoint together of, say, converting fractions, and I could do this, so kids could be on their device, kids could be doing independent work or small group. I could use it as an enrichment tool. The vocabulary part tied into NearPod brings in videos, everything from like Phases of the Moon, to there's some SEL lessons, some life skill, math, science. So teachers have the opportunity to kind of enhance, and it goes kindergarten through 12th grade.
Thanks, C. That helps. All right, does anyone have any questions?
Okay, I'm going to try and get flow, vocabulary.
There you go.
Right?
Yeah.
First time out. So this is an addition. The vocabulary is not something we were using previously. Is that my understanding?
Like we're seeing across the world, this is a merger. So it was a vocabulary and a NearPod, now they are one entity.
One long name.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any, oh, so do we have a motion for this item?
I move to approve the purchase of NearPod vocabulary learning application for the 2021 and 2022, 2023 school year.
All right, do we have a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0. 14.3, Approval to Purchase Graphing Calculators for High School Students.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase and delivery of BACH graphing calculators in the amount of $213,677.23 plus tax. six hundred and seventy seven dollars and twenty three cents plus tax.
Okay. Honey, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point three.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none?
I got one.
Oh, you do? Absolutely.
Because it might make.
Directly on.
It might be important for the public to know, why do we need calculators? Everybody has them on their phones. But it's important to know, you can't use those phone calculators to take tests because you could cheat with those. So that's why we need graphic calculators. When we were young, we all had our own graphic calculators, but that's not the case anymore. I don't know if you want to add.
Spot on.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment? Um, graphing calculators are really important for high school students, and not only because we cheat on our phones, but the cost can be a barrier for access for a lot of students in Tacoma. So it's not just that. We need them because they be cheating. But also, just acknowledging that the cost of a graphing calculator has been a barrier in the past. So it's really cool that we're doing this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director.
I would just echo the shock when I, it was on our list a couple of years ago to purchase.
You can easily break a hundred dollars.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you get a pretty one.
We weren't looking at pretty.
I don't know if that's possible, a pretty girl.
I had a pink one. I had a pink one every year.
I didn't even say.
Don't yuck somebody else's yum, Dr. Garcia.
I apologize. Stay focused.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, any abstentions? All right, passes five zero. Thank you, Z. Moving on, item fifteen, business matters. Fifteen point one is the approval of acceptance of Northwest Harvest donation to McCarver Elementary School.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of K twelve, recommends the Board approve the acceptance of a donation from Northwest Harvest in the amount of fifty one thousand, six hundred dollars and the distribution of this resource in accordance with the accepted guidelines. Funding source, Northwest Harvest.
All right, we have a motion.
I move to adopt.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns?
I just wanted to say thank you to the Northwest Harvest and their generous donation. It's pretty amazing.
So question, Northwest Harvest or Safeway and Albertsons? How are they any related? Who, who, who gave us the money for that?
Northwest Harvest in partnership with Safeway and Albertsons. So it's a partnership.
Company.
They identified McCarver Elementary as a recipient of supporting through its Growing Food Justice Across Washington program. So Northwest Harvest donated one thousand thirty two Safeway-Albertson gift cards at a value of fifty dollars each. So I'm not sure the exact business relationship, but I, it's a combination between the three.
Fantastic. Wonderful to our McCarver students and families. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes five zero. Fifteen point two, approval of contract extension with Blue Granite for the data warehouse project.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the funding request to continue work on the data warehouse and continue the migration of existing data to the new H R and finance system. Funding source, technology levy.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
All right.
Approve.
Do a second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns?
I was just wondering if you could give a little more context for the public because this sometimes, like, just as far as the importance of this.
So this is the continuation of the work that's been going on for the last couple of years to build the warehouse. But now, as we are bringing on new systems for H R and finance, imagine a car, you know, it's a body and an engine. But you can't just drop a new engine into another car body. You have to reconnect everything. So what we're doing now with the new system is taking it away from N four and basically changing the plumbing in the system to point to the right places. So we have the bulk of the warehouse there in place. We just have to align it with the new system and change some of the languages and codes and things that have changed as we've moved to the new system.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes five zero. Thank you, Ed. Item fifteen point three is approval of the guaranteed maximum price to amendment to the contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Hansel Phelps Construction Company for Fawcett Elementary School.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve G M P two amendment, which states the guarantee maximum price G M P to date on the Fawcett Elementary School project and authorize the superintendent for designated to sign said G M P two amendment in the amount of fourteen million, seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars, excluding sales tax, for a total contract amount of thirty three million, seven hundred and ninety five dollars. Note, seven hundred and ninety five thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars.
All right, and do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fifteen point three.
A second.
Been moved and seconded. It sounds like this is something to do with the presentation we had today about Fawcett being ready to, getting ready to go. So do we have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes five to zero. Thank you again, Mr. Williams, for your, and your team. All right, moving on to other business, we have none. And so we get to the fun part about board comments and reports. And we will start with our student reps.
Madam, is it my agenda or do we have fifteen point four?
I.
I might have an old agenda.
I think you have an old agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, so student reps, is there, any of you want to speak? Okay.
Caitlin?
Yeah, oh, Caitlin. Couldn't see her hand over that chair.
I just had a question related back to the COVID thing and the masks. So on Monday, when like we don't have to wear masks outside, is that like if you're vaccinated or just like anyone?
It's a great question. It is anyone. And so there is no requirement based on vaccination status for outdoor masking at that point.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm specifically speaking on school grounds. And so there may be other areas in the community where they may have early learning centers or anything, but I'm talking about our T P S grounds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Superintendent, any, anyone else?
Hi, everybody. So I just wanted to give a highlight on our Black History Month fair that we had today. It was a success. A lot of students learn different things. We had businesses come out. We had sororities and fraternities there of Divine Nine. And it was really enjoyable. So what I talked about last meeting, certain conversations were had and progression and solutions are, solutions are in progress. So I didn't want to thank the board for that. And I'm really excited for the things that are about to happen.
Thank you, Paris.
Can you, can you tell them what school you go to and what was coming up next?
Yes.
Yeah.
I go to Montahoma, and we're going to have InterCultural. It's in May. I don't know the exact date. I don't really think that's final right now, but just look out for InterCultural. InterCultural, InterCultural is highlighting all the cultures in our school. And it's really big. Usually, we have a really big turnout for it. And it's just where different cultures get to perform. You get to learn and everything like that. So please look out for that, guys.
Thanks for letting us know about that. All right, Director Leon, do you have? Oh, oh, great, come on up.
Hello, everyone. Paris reminded me, my school has showcases, kind of like talent shows. And we had a Black royalty one ran by our SOTA Black Student Union. We had some amazing students. We had a fashion walk there and some amazing performances. And that was something that I wanted to highlight for my school. I go to Tacoma School of the Arts. And just personally, me, I guess it's a personal celebration, but I've been working on scholarships and the ACT six program. And so I'm waiting to hear back from phase three. So that's just something I wanted to share.
Oh, great, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for sharing. Good luck.
Yeah.
Okay, so Dr. Director Leon, you have anything you want to share today?
Sure, thanks. ACT six is a great organization, so get that. So Safe Streets is still continuing some good work. Well, first of all, they moved a few, a couple of months ago and opened house just recently. So they have a new location in town, nicer location, more space. And continuing to do their work with partnering with the city on helping unsheltered people in our community, which include our students, of course. So thank you to Safe Streets for doing that. College Success Foundation also was continuing to plan for a health symposium, which they do, have been doing yearly for a few years now. I had a couple of my residents, and now one of my graduates is going to go and help out with that and help hopefully stimulate people to go into healthcare. We need more people in healthcare. Just, I won't, so I will be, I want to thank the board and the superintendent for allowing me to go on my sabbatical, which I'm about to go on to Peru, which is where I'm from. I go there each year, most years, for about a month. And I teach medical students, physicians and residents down there, topics that they want to learn about. And I also learn about public health and what they're doing there and bring as much as I can back to hear an exchange of ideas and, and teaching. I get to take a couple of residents with me. And it'll be a special time. So thanks for the board allowing me to be absent for the coming month. And since I won't be here to advertise, Stadium is having one of their wonderful musicals, Grease, this year, a classic one, Grease. So April fourteenth weekend and April twenty first weekend. So please go to that. It's a lot of fun, top notch stuff. And I want to just congratulate, there's a lot of great athletics going on, but I had, I had spent a lot of time with wrestling teams and some basketball teams as I do my sideline medicine, as I take care of the injuries and things like that. But a lot of wrestling time, because one of my, my, my child is wrestling. I want to congratulate just all of the schools in the district, not just stadiums, but their coaches and the way they ran their tournaments and their, their events. Because as you all remember, there was a big outbreak of COVID at the beginning of the year. Had a different tournament outside of our district. So it was a hotspot, and I think a place where there could be a lot of liability and people missing school and injuries that occurred from COVID, but also injuries from any contact sport. So I want to just congratulate all the teams in Tacoma for doing it very safely, high quality teaching on how to wrestle safely. And also congratulate all the teams that went to state and all the, all the placers. I'm not going to name them all, but they were, Lincoln and Silas did very well.
Thank you. Director McElroy.
On today, I went to Montahoma High School to visit their Black Student Union, Black History Celebration. And I really think that the staff there did an amazing job working with students and cultivating like a love of their own culture and community. It was really nice to see that the students had matching T shirts. And I know it's a big deal sometimes. They were like, oh, T shirts are nothing. No, it costs money. So shout out to the teachers who put that together for their, for their youth. It was really nice to meet some of the community. I wouldn't call them community partners yet, but these are community partners in the making because they were on campus and they can't wait to find new ways to partner with the district. I definitely was giving out our information, like, you need to connect with the Office of Partnership. Shameless plug. But also while I was there, I met a student teacher, and he's in the middle of a career change. And I want to give a shout out to our district and just promote, promote, promote. We are hiring people who have bachelor's degrees. If you'd like to transition into teaching, you love the youth, and you want to get involved, Tacoma Public Schools would love to have you. Our youth need people from the community who care about it and who want to show up. And this is a community member who grew up here in Tacoma and is transitioning now into teaching work from like a career in business and engineering. So it's really cool to see that local people in our community really care. So huge shout out to Montahoma's Black Student Union for the work they did today. And that's why I made Paris give the highlight on what's coming next because their events are really cool, and I'm really excited to hear about what's going on at Stadium. Lincoln has some events coming up too. So yeah, that's my committee report or community report.
Thank you. Director Stroger, do you have anything you want to add?
My other pass.
Okay. Vice President Keating.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it short. I just, I mentioned a little bit about the legislature and keeping up with session, which can make one's eyes roll in the back of their head. And it's moving very fast. They're packing in kind of what you would expect in a full session of a hundred and twenty days in sixty days. So it's quite a bit to track. And I did attend the WASDA Federal Network Relations Meeting last week with directors around the state and just kind of looking, assessing on what priorities, different areas are focusing on and how we can collaboratively and collectively work on behalf of all students in the state. And then, oh, one fun thing that I did. My daughter and I went to the Asian Pacific Cultural Center's lunar year celebration on Saturday, which was the first like large event that I think most people or many people had attended. And APCC did such, their staff did such a good job of safety protocols. And it was just a really, it's a very cheerful celebration. And we had a number of our congressmen, congresswomen, and representatives in the state, from the state and local electeds. It was, it was a lot to celebrate. And so it was, it was a joy to actually be there. Yeah, I think that's it.
Fantastic. All right, well, I will just segue on the legislative stuff to say that I, I did some work during this past, since the last board meeting to, to gather together the board presidents from the others, school boards in Pierce County to help lobby for a couple of different issues that are super important to all of us, including our, you know, funding on different levels, as well as some policy work. And that was actually really, I, I think, a really nice, nice opportunity. And when I spoke with each of them, of the, my colleague, board, board presidents, everyone seemed enthusiastic about getting together more often and doing more communal work and, and thinking about policy in a, in a Pierce County kind of way. And so that's very exciting. So we'll be coming back with hopefully more work with our, with our fellow colleagues. Yes?
I just remembered something. We have a student rep who is a daffodil princess. And this year, they are doing the daffodil parade. And I know our schools and marching bands will be involved. They just posted that about a week ago that the parades are happening. And I just wanted to say that because I know we have a princess in our mist. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, so anyway, as I was saying, we're going to be, you know, hopefully working with our colleagues more on, not just on policy issues, but also sharing across our boards, different ways that we can make a difference for the, the students and families that we serve. And you'll remember at the beginning of COVID, in twenty twenty, we actually all got together as, and, and as boards and also worked on addressing the immediate crisis of getting food to our children, to our students who couldn't access it because the schools were closed. And, and so we were trying to figure out ways to do that. And we worked as a school system in Pierce County together, and that was very effective. So we're going to try and continue that. The other, the other piece that I just wanted to share is we did have a J Mac meeting, Joint Municipal Action Council meeting, the, the day after our last board meeting. So that topic was on community wealth building. And it was a quarterly meeting with the CEOs of all of the, the eight J Mac member agencies. And it was really fascinating, really highlighting the minority women business enterprise owners, M W B E efforts that are going on within each of our organizations. And a lot of great ideas were shared. So that was just where we are. And we've, so that's it for my update.
May I add one thing?
You may.
I actually want to thank President Bonbright. The level of work that this legislative session has dropped on our laps has been substantial and really hard to keep up with. And, um, as the ledge rep, I'm so grateful to your help and your ability to step in and advocate alongside and, um, really divide and conquer. So I'm really grateful, um, cause there's just been a lot this session. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Team Tacoma, go Team T P S. All right, well, so the other, other announcements is our next, next time we get together is next Tuesday, March first. Uh, we're having a board retreat, which will be, which will be nice. So, um, and then on March tenth, which is our next business meeting, we'll be here at six o'clock in this room. So if, uh, anybody have anything else, um, and, um, share? All right, for the, uh, we are now adjourned. Okay.